It's 6:32 and I'm gonna bring the Monday, January 27th. I'm not close enough? It's in my face. My light is on.
Hi, Louise.
This close?
That's better.
Okay. Testing, testing? Okay. All right, I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Welcome. We're going to go through a roll call of the commissioners and then I'll start moving. Tonight, we have a study session on housing strategies. So first thing is our roll call. Chair Pascoe is absent. Commissioner Phillips is here. Commissioner Drazen is absent. Commissioner Lopes?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'm here.
And Commissioner Schrodl is absent. Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Great. All right, at this time, I'd like to open it up to see if there are any public comments for any items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone? Okay. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to staff for our main topic of conversation tonight.
So, good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Karen Birig. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager. And tonight, we'll have a presentation that will be given by the Department of Planning Staff. Are you on?
I am on.
Maybe? I mean, it does seem like it's difficult for it to pick up because usually it picks up very well.
All right. He was just waiting for it to leave.
Okay. All right. So, away then, it's not good enough. So, good evening. I just wanted to give a quick overview of what the presentation will be tonight. First of all, I wanted to kind of remind you that this is actually a result of the Long Range Planning Work Program. And it also, our discussion tonight is around an issue paper. And that is a new item that we introduced this year. There were kind of two major changes with respect to how we put together the Long Range Planning Work Program. One was that we actually made it a two-year work program, recognizing that some projects, and a lot of projects, actually took more than a year. Also recognizing that we were getting a lot of different input, and we wanted to bundle those recommendations and suggestions together topically. And that's what we've done. And the issue paper, and the intent of the issue paper, actually is to take a very high level overview of the input that we received, also through the Long Range Planning Work Program, but through also other actions that have been having that would influence changes to the comp plan or the ZDO related to housing. And so, tonight, we're going to be giving you a presentation, an overview of that issue paper, and the discussion of the analysis. And then, at the end of the meeting, we're going to be asking you some specific questions. So, the input that we'll be looking for is, are these the correct strategies to include? And does the order make sense? Because we will be looking to recommend, or recommending an order to address these strategies. Another question, we want to talk a little bit about engagement and how we do the engagement for this project. And then, the final question really is around, what other items should be considered as we move through the work program? Okay? So, that's, I'm just giving you a preview of the end of the presentation. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Martha Fritzie and Joy. Actually, Joy, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Hello. I'm Joy Fields. I'm a senior planner in the Planning and Zoning Department. And we are here to talk about the Housing Issues Paper. In 2019, there was a housing needs analysis conducted for Clackamas County that included certain incorporated areas as well as the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. That housing needs analysis identified the need for capacity for an additional 5,000 housing units in the urban unincorporated area of Clackamas County.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. You said the unincorporated area only. So it's more than that for the entire county? Correct?
When you look at the housing needs analysis, the deficit in the urban unincorporated area is...
Very large. It's 5,000 units. When you look at some of the incorporated cities, there is some capacity to serve some of the need for the future population. When you look at the rural areas, there are some capacity. But overall, there is still a need for additional housing units. And the greatest need tends to be in the urban unincorporated area.
All right. Thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome. Tonight, we will be looking at the need for additional housing and putting it in the framework of housing that is affordable, that can be accessed, that is available, and that is diverse. In the housing needs analysis, it shows the great increase in the cost of the average home sales price in Clackamas County. You'll see both the urban unincorporated area as well as the rural unincorporated area, the sales price for homes has skyrocketed. Thirty-four percent of households are cost burdened. That means that they spend more than 30% of their income just on housing. In 2018, the housing needs analysis found that 47% or 71,298 households made less than 80% of the median family income. That's less than $76,597 a year. To meet the affordability definition in Senate Bill 1051, that means that housing needs to be less than $1,148 a month to be affordable. $1,148 a month for housing. To have access to that housing, it has to be in close proximity to where you need to live, whether it's because of family pressures, or employment, or services that you are taking part in. It also has to be available. In the planning world, when we say access, we often mean transit, biking, walking, or roads. But from a housing perspective, if the housing is not available, there are no units for you to rent. The units that are available are way more than you can afford, above that $1,148 a month. And you can't get to those units, then you don't have access to housing. And so, there's an access issue as well in Clackamas County, accessing housing. This exhibit from the housing needs analysis shows the deficit in available units. Just looking at the urban unincorporated Clackamas County area, it shows that we have a capacity of building 88 units in the medium-density areas, 208 units in the medium-high-density areas, and 135 units in the high-density. That is a deficit of 1,342 units in the medium-density. That is land zoned for medium-density. And so, that is where we come up with the total deficit of approximately 5,000 housing units. We don't have land at the current zoning to be able to build the number of units that is needed for the projected population in the future.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, how does urban growth boundary play into this? Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
So, I'm gonna jump in here. Hi, I'm Martha Fritzie, a senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Division also. There's a couple of things to keep in mind. One is, the analysis only looked at residentially-zoned land. And so, one of the logical conclusions from this is that there's going to be more pressure to develop multifamily units in commercially-zoned land, which does allow multifamily units. That wasn't accounted for. The county is not under the same obligations as cities are under statewide planning goal 10. So, we are not obligated to go out and find 5,000 units, whereas if we were a city, we would have to, that would be the logical next step, and we would look at infill, we would look at increasing densities, and we would potentially look at expanding the urban growth boundary. We, in Clackamas County, are part of the metro urban growth boundary, which is administered by Metro. And so, there are processes to go through to request an expansion of the urban growth boundary. It has generally been the policy over the last several years, if not decades, that urbanization should fall to the cities, not the unincorporated county area. We have several cities that are looking at areas outside of the urban growth boundary for their own growth. We have a lot of urban reserve area that has finally been acknowledged. That is sort of the logical next step. So, it is a consideration, but it's not something that we can directly affect at this time. But it certainly is a consideration as other cities have the same sorts of constraints in their lands. I feel like this isn't on. Good.
May I ask a question? Do these figures consider areas like Government Camp, where you have a seasonal recreation area that employs many, but the affordability of that housing for what their pay scales are is minimum, and there's mass travel for these employees that is very unaffordable?
The housing needs analysis did look at billable land inventory up in the Government Camp area, as well as Welch's and the Hoodland area. And it is not included in this figure, but it is included in the report, in the housing needs analysis.
Okay. For this chart that you have here, that's the demand you're assuming will be there for What is the current level that we're at for housing?
Are we meeting the current demand?
Yes.
That's your question. If you look at the number of households that are cost burdened, I would say we might be serving some of the demand, but if you look at the homeless population as well, I would say, no, we're not meeting the current demand. And some of that might be affordability, some of that might be access, some of that might be other-related complications. But we have the point-in-time count that identified approximately 2,000 individuals that were houseless. And so, there's a question, are we meeting the demand? And I, you might have the answer from the housing needs analysis, but I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Well, no, I mean, I think that was a good answer. So, if you're talking about purely number of units, yes, there's probably, there's enough land to provide the number of units. But it's more complicated than that. It's affordability, and types of units, and locations. And so, I think that the housing needs analysis is one piece of information. There's a lot of other information that Joy's gonna talk about in just a minute that fed into the housing strategies to try to address not just the numbers of units, but some of these other issues as well. I don't think that our housing stock meets the current demand. In strict numbers, it probably does, but not in terms of those other nuanced aspects.
Okay, I deal with homeless veterans on a regular basis. What I've found is, most of those folks, they can't find a job, yet when you look on the market, there's plenty of jobs out there. It's not what they want. So, I'm curious as to what kind of approach we're gonna make to find people housing that don't seem to want it. They don't want to go get it. They don't want to take the jobs.
Can I jump in? On this one? So, one of the things that, I'm not quite sure, we might be a little bit clearer later, but with the housing needs analysis, it really provided us with some direction about what kind of our future, the matching the future supply and future demand will be. One of the other things that we'll be talking about is, the county has recently completed a, or worked with a committee, the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force, which came out with a lot of different recommendations of actions to make to address housing across the board. And for the county, I like to think of the, our H3S, our housing and housing...
Health, housing.
Health, housing, and human services. They work with a lot of programs that might be addressing what you're talking about with respect to, how do we address connecting people with jobs? You know, how do we address maybe services that people need? But this particular project that we're talking about really is pointed and addressing the recommendations that came out that will influence our zoning development ordinance and our comprehensive plan. And I think that's something that we'll flesh out a little bit in the presentation as the presentation goes on, but I think it speaks to kind of what your question was there.
One of the last points on the issue is that housing type needs to be diverse. At different points of our life, we need different types of housing, whether we are a young college student, or a young family, or an older couple that needs housing that doesn't have two flights of stairs. There are different types of housing that can be used by different pieces of the population at different times of their life. And one of the items in the housing needs analysis was that we need a diversity of housing. It doesn't all need to be low-density residential housing. Some of it needs to be multifamily housing. Some of it needs to be smaller units. Some of it needs to be attached single-family. Some of it does need to be detached single-family. And so, looking at future demographics with the increase in the baby boomer population and the increase in millennial generation, we need to think about smaller units and affordability as well, but also the different types of housing units that they would want to live in.
Are we looking at diversifying our neighborhoods? Meaning, too, some of these neighborhoods are sterile in my neighborhood, like in my area, in the Mount Hood corridor. And it's because of the demand for forest properties. So, you end up with higher incomes buying lower-income housing to satisfy their second home needs or to develop and create. We don't see the diversity that makes a more successful neighborhood, that can withstand fluctuations in the economic areas. And the social skills are not being learned because of that diversity. We don't have different changes in income levels.
Some of the strategies that we will be looking at are mandated by the state, including House Bill 2001, which requires different housing types, such as middle housing, to be allowed in certain areas. Or, and so, some of that diversity in housing may be in response to House Bill 2001. And so, that is a discussion as we move forward to looking at how changes to the comp plan and the ZDO will be reflected and address these strategies. We will be looking at diversity.
I think Mike hit on it with what he said about some of his homeless veterans don't want to take housing in some areas. Well, perhaps it's because they're being pushed out to an area that's sterile, that it's all consisting of a lower income. I would like to see a focus in mixed incomes.
And I wanted to ask, at any point in any of this, are they going to be addressing people's mental health needs? Because there is a large segment of the homeless population that has mental health needs. They were released from, you know, institutions when those all closed years ago. And I actually know a couple of homeless people, and they don't want to work, and they don't want to be in a home, any kind of housing. They just want to live in their tent outside and be free. And, you know, that's not everybody, but there's a large portion of people who have mental health needs. When I worked for the Department of Corrections, 80% of our female inmates had mental health issues, and 30% were severe. And so, a lot of those people who have mental health needs are in our prison system, but also, a lot of them are on the streets. And so, is there gonna be tie-in for that as well?
So, I have a clarification question for staff based on that. So, the housing issues are really diverse, but what we're looking at tonight, and what we're looking at to get on the work plan for the housing strategies, is really what can be done in the comp plan and the ZDO, right? So, it's not to say there aren't, it's not gonna necessitate a whole lot of other solutions to address these problems, but that's not necessarily a ZDO issue, right?
So, one of the things, and I was noticing Martha was pulling this out, so in your packet of information, and it's a part of the issue paper, is a table that looks like this, okay? And so, staff pulled this table together to be able to kind of associate what we've been talking about as the housing continuum, which is across the top, which has to do with different levels of income. People are at different levels of income, and therefore, they can afford different types of housing. And there's different strategies that maybe apply depending on that income level. So, that's the kind of the rows across the top that talk about that. Now, the areas in orange, and it says, "Housing Programs Provided by H3S," the Development Agency, and some private and nonprofit partners. So, those list more of the programs that are there to assist in different types of housing. And those might range from providing for emergency shelter, homeless shelter, providing for rapid rehousing, short-term housing. Those type of things are programs that, again, we won't be addressing directly. There are some of our strategies, and when we get into it, and I'll touch on them briefly, that support, that could support some of these actions. And I think the transitional shelter, the works to be able to identify whether or not we have specific regulations related to transitional shelters, that would be something that supports the ability for a program or H3S to help support transitional shelters. So, there's some crossover. But for the piece that you were talking about with regards to mental health, I don't think any of the DTD strategies that is in our set of consideration right now directly speak to mental health. So, I do think that this is kind of helpful to give you an idea of, you know, here are programs that H3S, and where their focus on, the focus that we have here, and they have been looking at, are the ones that are in blue. And we'll get specifically and talk about specific details about each of these that are covered in blue, and how those different strategies might impact the various income levels. And we considered that and looked at that as we were doing our analysis to recommend our work program. So, pass it back over.
So, the strategies that we will look at tonight were identified from a variety of sources, including state mandates with House Bill 2001 and Senate Bill 1051, and the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force, which studied the homelessness and affordability issue, and worked with the consultant that developed the housing needs analysis along with other reports, and made some recommendations. They made a lot of recommendations that included topics that you were looking at regarding mental health, but they made some specifically to planning and zoning regulations. And those were the ones that we're considering from a work program arena. And then, we also have the recommendations that came out of the development of the Long Range Planning Work Program. The strategies that we included were identified by those three sources. And they were designed to address the needs identified in the housing needs assessment, including the need to have places for new housing units, and the need to have a diversity of new housing units. And also, to address the recommendations from the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force, including improving access to housing, improving housing stability, and limiting the potential for displacement, so that people don't lose their homes. And then, thirdly, meeting the legislative mandates through a variety of strategies. The strategies that are in the appendix that Karen just described were given numbers for ease of tracking and considering as we move forward with the housing strategies project. And they include R1 and R2. The R stands for required. The O, those are optional. And so, as we go through the initial analysis, and we go through each of these strategies, realize that there are significance to whether it's an R or an O.
And the required is basically from House Bill and Senate Bill?
House Bill 2001 or Senate Bill 1051. Yes.
It's very touchy.
It is. So, there was a great presentation to the Board of County Commissioners earlier in January that looked at the H3S programs related to housing. And I asked to borrow the graphic that they used, because it really puts it into perspective, the range of the houseless to the market-rate rental housing and homeownership. There is a vast continuum. And H3S provides programs for the houseless, for shelters, for rapid rehousing and recovery, for permanent supportive housing and affordable rental. They might have subsidies. And if it's not H3S, it's one of their partner agencies. The strategies that were recommended through the variety of sources, some deal with the houseless and the shelters. Optional strategy one, shelter off the streets. Optional strategy three, the temporary shelter communities, transitional shelter communities, deals with the semi-more-permanent structures that provide shelter as people are transitioning between houseless and rentals at full price, or even subsidized rentals. And then, optional strategy four and six, look at how zoning regulations or the ZDO can impact affordable housing through densities or parking. And then, there are other strategies, including the required ones, and optional strategies two, seven, eight, and nine, that deal with the rental to homeownership. two, seven, eight, and nine, that deal with the rental to homeownership.
Joy?
Yes.
I'm not sure if now is the proper time, but since I'm noticing that option five isn't here, and it's the one that I want to talk about, because that was the one I was mostly surprised about. Because my understanding for Clackamas County is we lack both industrial and commercially-zoned property. So I was pretty surprised to see one of the considerations being utilizing commercial property for residential in whatever capacity. And I understand that it is zoned for certain types of residential, but I just, my reaction was, are we throwing the baby out with the bathwater by giving up insanely valuable land that's close to transportation and flat and resources? And so why was it not in this picture? And do we want to wait till later to talk about that?
That was a typo for not being included in this.
Oh.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Well, good.
Because it needs to be included in this.
But I just don't know, right now in this discussion, it's good to talk about the consideration of commercial property zone, or commercially-zoned properties.
So if you will humor me, I'm going to jump into sort of the preliminary analysis of each of the individual strategies, and then maybe that can answer some of your questions. And if you still have more, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer them.
Great.
And would you like our comments as you go through each one?
Yeah, that would help to know.
Honestly, I'm going to try to get through all of it, because they do all kind of weave together into an ultimate recommendation at the end of phasing, of grouping together and phasing certain strategies. But it's okay if it's really pressing. So, as you can well imagine, trying to tackle the very first issue paper with this many different issues and strategies was a bit mind-boggling, and it was, it was difficult. And I hope that we've put together something that is readable and understandable and helpful to people. When we were looking at analyzing the different potential strategies to include and to move forward through the various phases of our Housing Strategies Project, we had to consider a number of things, because there's a lot, and there's not a lot of us, and we, we have our staff and our budget, and it's not possible to complete all of these things right now. So we had to come up with a method to assess and try to prioritize and understand really what, what we could do now versus what may require some more staff time and more outreach and more scoping to really understand how to do it well in the future. So we considered the current regulatory framework, what was allowed, how the, how the strategy fit into our current comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance. We looked at available resources, including staff time and budget. We also looked at opportunities that we had through two other grant-funded projects that we have going on right now, and how we could wrap some of these tasks into those projects. We looked at the needs identified in the housing needs assessment and asked ourselves, does this strategy increase places for new housing units? We looked at the strategy through an equity lens, which was something that was recommended through the task force that was previously mentioned. And we looked at whether or not the strategy improves access to housing, improves housing stability, and does it limit the potential for displacement? And then, of course, we have to consider the legislative mandates. And so all of those things wrapped into this preliminary analysis that I am going to go through fairly quickly, it is included in the issue paper. And again, I am happy to answer questions at the end of this. It is also, sure, there is some of it included in this spreadsheet, which was Exhibit Two or Attachment, Appendix B, attached to your, in your packet. So we're going to just briefly talk about the mandates quickly. R1 is modify policies and code to have clear and objective criteria. So Senate Bill 1051 in 2017 came out, and it includes a requirement that all housing be approvable under clear and objective standards. Now, you can have discretionary standards as an option, only if you have a path of, for clear and objective. This requires a pretty hefty audit of our comprehensive plan and our zoning code, and we have not yet embarked on this. We intend to, and because it involves a lot of work in both the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, we think that it logically is something that can happen at the same time as some of the other strategies, including R2, which is going to involve a big look in our comprehensive plan and our zoning code. And then one of the optional strategies, to package all of these together, rather than open up the plan and the ZDO for this huge audit multiple times, they logically go together. And so we will certainly be looking at any changes that we make to our zoning code and to our comprehensive plan with respect to this clear and objective standard that we now have to have. And so that is recommended for the second phase of this project, and we can talk about timing of that at the end. R2 is also recommended for the second phase. This, making duplexes, triplexes, cottage clusters, and the whole litany of what is called middle housing and outright use in urban single-family residential zones. And so this came about under House Bill 2001 in 2019. I'm not sure if you've had a presentation about that House Bill yet. I feel like there's been a conversation about it, but I could be wrong. Essentially, what it means for Clackamas County is that within our urban area, inside the Portland metropolitan urban growth boundary, the county is required to allow duplexes on every lot zone for single-family residential use. And then the county is required to require these other middle housing types in areas zoned for single-family residential use. And so that is not very clearly defined. There are a lot of things that need to be more clearly defined that the state is working on right now. There is rulemaking going on. There's also a model code being developed. And so that is a big part of the reason that we are recommending this be, this item be in the second phase of the Housing Strategies Project. We are not obligated to make any changes to our codes until Ju-, the June of 2022, June 30th, I believe. And so there will be ample time, once we have the information that's coming out of the Rules Advisory Committee and the model code, to make those changes. And so that would be through the second phase of this project, yes?
Just a quick question. So, so what, does that mean it's more or less not allowed until you make those zone changes? In other words, someone wants to go in my neighborhood, put it, take down, buy my house, take it down and turn it into a duplex? They can do that regardless of what the current zoning codes say?
No, we will have to amend our zoning code by 2022 to allow for that. It doesn't, it's not effective yet, so you couldn't come in and do it right now.
So it's not effective until 2022 or when we-
Or whenever we adopt it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, so those are the mandates. Whoa, what happened?
I think there's information.
Oh, wow. So I'm going to move on to the optional strategies. So optional strategy one is identify appropriate areas and processes to allow for shelter off the streets. Shelter off the streets is a term that I first heard when I went to a couple of the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force meetings. And I think it can mean a lot of different things. Sort of in the short term, it can mean safe places to camp, or other, or providing other temporary shelter types, allowing car camping, providing places for people to camp in RVs. In the longer term, shelter off the streets could be more the permanent shelter-type housing, transitional housing. As far as this particular item, we are really talking, we're thinking about it in terms of the short-term tents and places to camp. And so currently, our zoning code allows campgrounds in certain areas through a conditional use permit. It's pretty limited. It allows, through a conditional use permit, government entities to apply for something like this. The way that the county has currently been citing these types of facilities is through an emergency declaration that's been used for temporary shelters. And the, in looking at this item, the discretionary land use approval process is not really well-suited to meet the urgency. And when we're looking at it through whether or not it's going to create new housing units, it's not really housing units, it's really safe places to camp. And staff feels that relying on the current procedures of the emergency declaration is a more appropriate way to address the immediate need of needing to locate camp, people camping. I mean, absent somebody going through the conditional use permit where it's allowed. It tend, the conditional use permit tends to be expensive and time-consuming. It can be controversial, and it requires, you know, sets of land use hearings and things like that. And so in terms of making specific zoning code changes, staff is proposing not to move this forward in the Housing Strategies Project, but to continue to rely on the emergency declaration for temporary shelters. Strategy O3, which I'm going to talk about in just a minute, really deals with more of the longer-term, more permanent shelter-off-the-street housing, which we are proposing to include in the Housing Strategies Project. And then optional strategy O2, which is a recommendation that came out of the task force as well, was to review potential to add housing to schools, places of worship, and church-owned properties. And so currently in our zoning code, you can add housing to schools, places of worship, or church-owned properties if the underlying zone allows it, and it would need to be developed under the underlying zoning code requirements and densities. And I think the intent of this policy was to allow higher-density housing development potentially in, on church or school properties. When you look at many of our church and school properties, even though it seems like there is some land available, a lot of them are fully developed with playgrounds and athletic facilities and parking, and it is really unclear how much and what kinds of housing might be appropriate in these areas. It is, we feel something worth perhaps looking into, but there's a lot more time that needs to be put into engaging agency and community partners and really understanding what the objectives would be and what would be appropriate. And so staff is proposing to evaluate this in Phase Three of the Housing Strategies Project.
Let me ask you something about that. Has there been a request from the schools and the churches to do this? Or are we just looking at it, just looking at it as an alternative?
So I'm not aware of a specific request, certainly not from a school. There may be some churches who are willing to do this. To what extent, I'm not absolutely certain. I mean, we're looking at this as an alternative. It's something that was discussed in the task force meetings and was advanced forward as a recommendation. They considered it, they tiered their recommendations, they prioritize in Tier One, Tier Two, and I believe there's a Tier Three, I'm not sure. And this was a Tier Two. There was an understanding, at least from the few meetings that I went to, there's an understanding that, there's a little bit of uncertainty around what this really means, and it's something worth looking into, but it's not something that's clearly defined right now. And again, this would only be in the urban area. We are, we are limited in our rural areas to what additional housing we, we can allow. State law limits it, with the one exception possibly being up on the mountain and in other unincorporated communities, which are their own, different animal under state law.
So I'm looking at this chart here under O2, and it says level of staff effort high, yet there doesn't appear to be any agency or any, somebody wanting it. So you're going to spend some time on developing this, but you don't know if anybody's really going to use it. Is that what I'm understanding?
So I think that's why it's recommended for the third phase, because more time needs to be spent reaching out to the public and reaching out to churches and schools and reaching out to other community partners to understand really if this is necessary and what it should look like if there is a desire to use it.
Are we under emergency status on the housing crisis right now?
I don't believe so.
And real quick, it says adding housing, so at, option two, it isn't tents, it's like, like mini homes or RVs or something. I, I'm not sure I understand-
That is my understanding of it.
Okay, not tents.
There'd be more permanent housing. Because the tents, RVs, car camping is really, would fall under O1, the shelter off the streets.
This is more like a little mini home or whatever.
Yes, or an apartment building, I suppose. You know, I'm not entirely sure.
There's some churches that take in people already. My mother's church, for example. So I think it's, gives maybe these churches an opportunity to expand.
So instead of housing people in a basement, maybe there, some, some land they have to put mini, okay. That's making it clear for me, thank you, Tom.
So moving on to the optional strategy three, consider permanent regulations to allow transitional shelter communities. This is the more permanent shelter off the streets. This is also may, that picture may look familiar to you. Several years back, the county adopted some temporary rules in the zoning code to allow for shelter on government-owned industrially-zoned properties, which resulted in the Vets Village development. And that, those were temporary rules, and they sunsetted in August of last year and were not re-upped. It doesn't mean they can't be. It was very narrowly written at the time, and it was only used once for the Vets Village. And so there, there really aren't a lot of areas that are zoned or that don't have additional market pressures to develop more valuable, more dense housing in the multifamily zones that you're going to find transitional shelter communities. And so currently, again, you could do something like this as a conditional use, as a government use, but there's pretty limited availability and usage for private parties. And so this, looking at, considering permanent regulations for transitional shelter communities, whether or not they look like they looked before. There are some other zoning codes. I believe Tigard has just recently adopted one that could be used as a good model. It could address the needs of some of the lowest-income households, which has been identified as a board priority. And we think it can be done for a reasonably low amount of staff effort if we start with some of the existing language that we had in the ZDO before. And so this is a task that staff is recommending move forward in the first phase of the Housing Strategies Project, to really consider where this might be appropriate countywide and what kind of rules we could potentially write to allow for more transitional shelter communities. There is an immediate need for these, as far as I know. And so optional strategy four has been split out into two, A and B. These are strategies that came out of the recommendations for the Housing Task Force. The first one is providing a tiered density bonus for inclusion of affordable housing. Currently, our zoning code has a very minimal density bonus for affordable housing. It doesn't get used very often. Developers have told us it just really isn't a good financial incentive for them. And so the task force recommended that we look at our density bonus and create something that is, creates more of an incentive to, to developers to actually use. And this could provide a moderate amount of new housing units, and it could address an immediate need for some more affordable units. It wouldn't be an extraordinary amount, but it would certainly, if we could create something that's a little more usable, it would, it would create more permanently affordable units out there for folks.
Martha, real quick, when I read this, my, my thought was, you know, bonus is nice, it's incentive, but why not require it? All development require a certain, and, and has that been discussed? Has that been, I mean, that's, I do, but-
I believe that's called inclusionary zoning.
Oh.
And, and the city of Portland is doing it, and I suppose through this project, we could look at the whole gamut of incentives versus require. I mean, I think that's something we probably would have to look at as part of this task.
So it has not been-
I'm not as familiar with how everything is going important with inclusionary zoning, but it's, it's certainly worth noting as part of this, whether it be a density bonus or, or requirement. I feel like the task force shied away from the inclusionary zoning conversation and a requirement, and leaned more toward an incentive, but it would certainly be on the table, as far as I'm concerned, for consideration.
Good. Good, thank you.
So in the areas where you'd be looking at doing the density bonus, are there other zoning regulations that might need to also go with that? Like an increased height limit or something like that that would need to be looked at?
Yes, it, it's very possible and we would certainly not do it in a vacuum. If we're, if we're looking to increase densities and bonuses, in fact, we're going to get to another item. We need to look at parking, certainly.
I know that's in there.
This is, yeah, this is, they do, a lot of these do tie together and so I.
So we can assume that comes with looking at the package for it.
Yes, and so this is recommended to be included in phase one of the housing strategies project to, to look at this. I, again, I think that staff can do the research and outreach in a reasonable manner and do it in conjunction with some of the other tasks that we're recommending to, to move forward in phase one. And they're complementary to each other, one of which is going to be parking. However, task oh four B is also something that came out of the task force recommendations talking. They talked about creating a transferable development right bonus system. And I have to be honest, I'm not entirely sure what they meant by bonus system. So our, our zoning code generally does not allow transfer development rights currently. It is something that we could certainly look at, but I don't think it would make sense to look at it until we see how all of the rest of the strategies shake out in terms of what changes are made to increase densities, to encourage housing in other places, to address the mandates from state law. It may be that a transferable development rights system is not necessary or logical, but it is certainly worth reevaluating in the third phase once we know what our zoning code looks like after the other phases.
I would say that if you're looking at a TDR, if you're looking at the sites that would be the receiving sites for the increased density, why not just allow the increased density outright rather than have to add additional cost to do the additional density that, to purchase the development rights that would make it harder to make that additional density for the developer?
And I don't disagree, and I think that's why it is worth looking at in the third phase to see if it's even really something that would make sense. Because oh five is to consider increasing or removing, removing maximum density requirements. It is specifically for multifamily developments in commercial zoning districts. There's a couple of reasons for this. This was also a request, I think this came out of the work program and it was also discussed in the task force. Currently, based on our housing needs assessment, we are lacking high density residentially zoned land. And I, like I said, I think one of the logical things that is going to come out of that is pressure in the commercial areas to build multifamily housing. This is commercial, not industrial. Our commercials, most of our commercial zones allow multifamily housing currently. And most of our commercial zones, not all of them, that allow multifamily housing have a maximum density of twenty-five units per acre. And that's, if it's a standalone multifamily development. The, if you're building a commercial development, you're not limited to sort of the size and scale that a twenty-five unit per acre multifamily development would be. And if you're building mixed use, you're not limited to that. And so there's a feeling, a thought that it's, it's not reasonable to cap the maximum density in multifamily zones or at least to consider raising the cap in the multi, in the commercial zones for multifamily development to, to be, to be more consistent with sort of the size and scale of development that would otherwise be allowed if it wasn't a standalone multifamily development. And I think also there has been some requests for a couple of developers who have been interested in some smaller commercial sites. And to make it financially feasible, they were interested in creating more units. And, and we're running up against some problems with the twenty-five units per acre maximum. And so it's something that we think that we should consider in phase one of the housing strategies project. And one of the reasons is that we have two grants right now from Metro. One to do some work in the Park Avenue Station area, which is the last station on the Orange Light Rail line, just outside of Milwaukee. And the other is to do some work in the eighty-second corridor. And I think that this, this type of work will correspond nicely with the work that we're doing with those two grant projects. And in fact, we can do some of the initial investigation and even perhaps some scenario planning of some specific sites with those grant monies to understand what the implications would be, both in terms of traffic impacts, in terms of impacts to neighborhoods, in terms of impacts to communities, impacts to commercial development and things like that. And those can, those can both be explored in those limited areas and then possibly applied countywide. And so with this consideration, it could substantially increase the number of new housing units out there. It could address some of the need that was found in the housing needs assessment. And it also could provide housing in close proximity to some of those services, goods and services that some of the lower income folks need to be in close proximity to for transportation purposes.
Would house, or height restrictions be considered to increase density and preserve parking?
So I'm racking my brain, I don't have my zoning code in front of me right now. I don't think there is a height restriction in most of our commercial zones. It's just been, it's been the market that has limited it and, you know, construction costs and then to some extent, maybe densities.
What, what about schools, things like that? What's going to be the impact on, you increase the density there, you're going to have possibly more kids going to a particular school? Schools not going to be able to support it?
That's all part of the analysis and looking at what might or might not be appropriate to do under that strategy. And so the important thing to keep in mind is, we're not concluding yes or no, we need, we, we are going to increase densities or we are going to change the affordable housing bonus. It's to advance it forward, to investigate it more thoroughly, do the public outreach, do the analyses involved, to understand if we need, if we should, if it's appropriate to change our zoning code. All of this will also come forward before the planning commission and the board for adoption, well, probably for more work sessions and adoption as we move through this process. And so those things certainly will be looked at.
So for oh five, you were talking about in phase one incorporating it into the Park Avenue and eighty-second projects. What about beyond that in other areas? Would that be looked at in a later phase or?
I guess in my mind, in a perfect world, we would consider whether or not it's appropriate, the conclusions that we come to in those specific areas, we would also consider whether or not it's appropriate to just apply that elsewhere in the county in the first phase. I don't know for sure, I'm not quite sure how it's going to, how it's going to look. So oh six, we're getting there, is to consider creating a hierarchy of minimum parking standards based on proximity to transit and/or dwelling unit affordability. And so this goes hand in hand with things like increasing densities and potentially incentivizing or requiring affordable units with multifamily housing, because we have to look at parking and often sites are constrained based on parking. And if your parking requirement is too onerous, it kicks you into the need to do structure parking, which gets more expensive, which makes your units more expensive and so on and so on. So there has been a request from several developers and also this was recommended through the task force that the county look at the code and create a hierarchy of parking standards. Currently, a multifamily unit is multifamily unit. It has a certain parking standard based on the number of bedrooms regardless of where it's located, regardless of what the affordability level of that unit is. And so the, we have heard and we have yet to see the data, although I think that there is some data out there that shows different rates of car ownership for households with different income levels. And so assuming that the data is out there that supports it, it is certainly possible to provide a sort of a scaled approach to parking ratios to enable higher density developments, but still have enough required parking. And that would include both transit and, near transit and for affordability levels. And so this also is an opportunity to leverage those grant funds in those two areas. It's something that's going to be looked at both in the Park Avenue and eighty-second corridor projects. And again, looked at whether or not that should apply countywide. And so staff is recommending that too be included in the first phase of the housing strategies project. And again, I think it ties in nicely also with the considerations of increased densities too. And so we're going to switch gears a little bit here. Oh seven is to consider rezoning land to preserve manufactured dwelling parks. This is, there was a report done and it talked about manufactured dwelling parks and potential for displacement. And one of the recommendations that came out of that report, and I believe it was, I don't know if it was discussed at the task force or not, is to consider creating a multifamily dwelling park zone. My understanding is that Portland has recently done this and it's pretty new and I don't know a lot of details about it. The, the idea behind it is that as land becomes more valuable and expensive, there's going to be increased pressures for manufactured home park owners to flip their property to a different kind of develop, develop, development. And quite frankly, mobile home parks, manufactured home parks are a really valuable source of affordable housing. It's naturally occurring affordable housing. It allows an ownership model where you're renting land but owning your unit. And so it's important, it's, it's valuable to, to recognize and it's important to keep. So you'll notice that staff is, is recommending at this point in time that this be considered in phase three, and there's a couple of reasons for that. Not because it's not important, but because currently our zoning code and state law require owners of a, a mobile home park to pay a fee to every individual tenant at the point in time where they want to redevelop their manufactured home park into a different use. That has been in effect since, I'm going to say two thousand and seven-ish. It was the first project I worked on when I got hired. And it's hard to tell whether or not that has been a really effective disincentive because of course there was the recession shortly after that. But to staff's knowledge, there have been two manufactured home parks redeveloped since then that, that would have triggered this need to pay tenants.
What is that fee?
I'm sorry?
What is that fee they're required to pay tenants?
Um, well.
A little over eleven thousand per tenant.
And it, and if it's a single wide, it's so much, if it's a double, triple, it, it has to do with the size of the home, but, and it's a relocation so that they can either move the home or relocate, right, to another, but.
And I believe it goes up above twenty thousand if it's, if it's a triple wide. And another point to be aware of for what it's worth is that the county's fees are higher than what the state required. That back in two thousand and seven, the, you know, county commissioners made a decision to actually try to create a larger disincentive to redevelop these properties. And so it's still worth looking into, it's definitely an important consideration. There is, I'm not sure of the high urgency of it. And I think that it's going to take a lot of time for public engagement, talking to park owners and really understanding how Portland's process has worked and if other jurisdictions have done this and how it's working and the sort of nuts and bolts of that. And so I think that's something that is appropriate for consideration under phase three of the housing strategies project.
Do you know a ballpark guess of how many parks we have?
A lot more than you think.
No, I don't, and there's a lot in the rural area.
To get that information to you because there is that information in that report.
There's a lot, yeah.
Since it is a, another form of addressing affordable housing, is there any opportunities to expand the amount of, of, of land that could be used? Or is it just something someone, anyone could do, it just doesn't pencil out anymore?
So it is allowed in our MR one zone, the medium density residential. I don't, I don't recall hearing about new parks. I don't think it's probably financially feasible. We do have expansions of existing parks from time to time, but a lot of our existing manufactured home parks are non-conforming uses. And a lot of them are actually in the rural area.
There's a lot more than you think, yeah.
Um, I don't think because of the limitations under state law, we would be able to apply any, a specific manufactured park zoning in the rural area, but I also don't feel like there's the development pressures. I mean, this would be an urban, certainly an urban look for the most part. And then strategy oh eight is interesting, this came out of the task force also. There was a lot of conversation about allowing different housing types and things like micro units, co-housing, live-work units. Those are all housing types that are not clearly defined in our zoning code. We would need to certainly define them and really understand if they are or are not allowed in our zoning code. I feel like some of those are, but there's maybe potential opportunities to expand areas or increase densities. Because certainly micro housing units and co-housing are intended to be smaller units. Live-work units are pretty self-explanatory. They are like what you see like in Arancow Station or in the Pearl District where there's a, a commercial component on the ground floor and somebody lives up above. I'm not convinced that's not allowed in our zoning code, but we would need to certainly look at how and where. And so the first step, of course, would be to develop clear definitions of what we're talking about and agree on what we want to allow.
What is co-housing?
Yeah, I skipped over that because I don't really know. So my understanding of co-housing, my understanding of co-housing is, is a community of smaller units with a lot of common area, including possibly a common kitchen and dining. Now, those units could have a kitchen themselves, they could not. These are things that we kind of need to define. Because if they have kitchens, they're apartment, I mean, they're multifamily dwellings and they're allowed. But it, it, it gets complicated, so.
Also, a lot of places that call themselves co-housing tend to have CCNRs about community events and how the relationship of the housing and the communal amenities are divided up and used, et cetera. So there tend to be more intentional.
Yes.
Regulations within the co-housing community itself.
People who go out and like they want to start an eco-community and they have these little dwellings where people sleep, but they have that common area, you know, where they all cook together and, you know, have the social area.
I guess I would call that co-housing as well. And, and so, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head there. We, we need to figure out really what it looks like, what we, what we want to allow potentially and where. And so this is one of those items that really is going to require some more time and engagement with the community and various agencies to understand really what, what our objectives are, what these different housing types are, whether or not we actually do allow them and then what changes we potentially want to make. And so again, this is going to be a lot more staff labor and time intensive. And so staff is recommending that this also be investigated in a future phase of the housing strategies project.
On the summary table, it says low for level of staff effort, is that a typo?
It's not supposed to be. I think there's actually some, I don't know. There's been a lot of discussion about what, what that means and I guess if, if it turns out we allow all of these housing units anyway, then it would be pretty low amount of effort. But if it involves a big project of new housing types and where and how to develop them, it would be high. And so I think there's maybe not total agreement because we're not entirely sure what it, what this project, what this strategy is or what it's going to look like. And so oh nine, clarifying comprehensive plan policies for rezoning in low density residential districts. This is the other policy I was referring to probably half an hour ago or so when I was talking about the required elements. And so our comprehensive plan, chapter four and chapter six, they include policies related to zoning in low density residential districts. There was a request from a community member or perhaps a CPO a little while back to, to look at these policies and clarify them and potentially restrict zoning. at these policies and clarify them and potentially restrict zone changes in urban low-density residential areas. And that would be from like an R-ten to an R-seven, from a ten thousand square foot lot to a seven thousand square foot lot. That's single-family zoning. It's not looking at changing to a different type of housing. At the same time, there was a recent decision out of LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, that made it apparent that our current policies really do need more clarity, and we also need to tie this into our requirement under Senate Bill 1051 to have clear and objective standards. So, this strategy is logically, again, part of that opening up of our comprehensive plan and looking at our policies, and it's recommended to be included in the second phase. And in the clarifying of the policies that you are required to meet in order to change between various single-family residential zonings, there will be consideration about whether or not it's appropriate to make it more difficult, to make it easier, really what the implications are of the changes that we make. And then, finally, we're going to get to Strategy Number Ten, to restrict temporary dwellings for care. This was a request that came about during the development of the work program from one of our CPOs. Currently, our zoning and development ordinance allows, in all zoning districts, temporary dwellings for care, also known as hardship dwellings. And it requires a land use application, and it requires that the temporary dwelling be removed if it's no longer needed or if the property is sold. And so, the request from the community was to consider limiting which properties could qualify for this use, rather than just simply allow it on any property with illegal dwelling. And so, through the assessment, staff really feels that restricting this use is counter to the goals in the comprehensive plan and also of this Housing Strategies Project to increase opportunities and diversity for housing. And this strategy is therefore recommended to not be moved forward through the Housing Strategies Project and just leave the temporary dwellings for care as they are.
This certainly couldn't be implemented on all zones, because there's zones where there's at least eight houses to the acre, and you couldn't put a second house on that eighth of an acre and comply with, you know, sewerage and all that. It must not happen in the small...
So, it doesn't happen as much in the urban area, you're right, but technically, it's allowed if you can figure out how to fit it. So...
Well, this could work with churches.
When we're talking about temporary dwelling here, we're talking about something that's substantial. I mean, it's not like a tent or something, is it?
No, it's a manufactured dwelling or RV that's allowed to be placed on your property and somebody live in it when there's a demonstrated need for care for medical or age-related reasons. That person has to demonstrate that there's a need for, that they need care on a daily basis and assistance. They also need to demonstrate that they can't all live in the same house together. I mean, there are certain standards that have to be met. And so, we call it temporary dwelling for care because it's temporary. You need to renew your application and demonstrate all of these things every four years. I'm not sure what the timeframe is. And then, once there's no longer a need, or if the property is sold, it needs to be removed from the property. So, it is a temporary dwelling, but it's not a tent, you're right.
How many of those do we have, you know?
A lot. We have a lot, yes. It is used often. In the rural area, not so much in the urban area, for a number of reasons.
We have a lot in Beaver Creek.
Yeah. So, that was a whole lot. There is a summary in the back of the issue paper and on these next two slides of the items that we are proposing to move forward and in which Phase, again, Phase One are those, you know, Oh Three, Four, Five, and Six listed up there, including permanent regulations for transitional shelters. I'm not going to read them all because you can read them, and I've talked a lot already. Phase Two are the two required items, and then that one other, look into our comprehensive plan. Phase Three are the ones that generally are going to require a little more scoping and outreach and understanding really what we are trying to accomplish, and in some cases with the manufactured dwelling parks, how this has worked in other jurisdictions. And then, the recommendation to not include, moving forward in the Housing Strategies Project, the temporary dwellings for care, and then also the shelter off the streets, the short-term temporary tent camping shelter off the streets item that we feel is better served through the emergency declaration.
Are you thinking one year for each phase, or what is your vision?
I love that you asked that question, Tammy. Ta-da. Oh, sorry. That's quite all right. So, I'm going to hand this back to Karen.
I'm not reading ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for all of your patience and kind of working with us as we walk through this, kind of our first issue paper and bringing all this information together. So, even through this work session, I've learned a lot, and one of the things that I learned was perhaps we should share with you what it means to be in Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three before we...
Before we start?
Before we start. So, that might have helped you understand what we were really talking about. But this is kind of a really simplified graphic that will help you understand what we mean by Phase One. So, we would anticipate, so each of these are about three-month chunk periods of time. Initially, when we put this together, when we were talking about the Housing Strategies Project, we were talking about an eighteen-month project. So, as we looked at all of these strategies, one of the things that we realized is it was pretty much impossible to do all of them within that eighteen-month period. As you can see, some of them overlap, but some of them have kind of different levels of intensity that we would be doing. So, what we tried to do is group them together, and as you saw through the assessment, you know, what are those that are appropriate to do in the near term, and then what should we be starting later? So, really, Phase One, we would anticipate taking, I guess they're not three-month periods, they're more like six-month periods, generally starting around now, as we were talking about in that Phase One, and then hoping to get through that and bring a package of amendments, and that's also what it means. We see it as kind of breaking it into two different groups, so there'd be two different package of amendments that would ultimately be brought forward to you for recommendation, then on to the board. There would be overlap. We wouldn't just work on one set of recommendations and then start the next. We would get the first phase started, and then as we were getting into it, we would then overlap and start the kind of the outreach work that we would need to do on the second phase. Really, for the third phase, we would assess kind of at the end of the spring in '21, that grouping that was in Phase Three, and whether, and try to make a determination how we would move forward at that time. So, really, the Phase Three is that sort of bucket, let's hold and wait on those, and then do a reassessment on whether or not we should be moving forward. So, that's what the three different options really look like and how they would look in our work program across time.
Mm-hmm, very good.
So, I think there's a couple of other elements that I really wanted to call out with regards to our work plan approach. So, one of them is lead with an equity lens. Now, leading with an equity lens has come out of the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force. They felt that was a very important tool to use. So, what that means is to be able to provide meaningful engagement opportunities for different people within our community, but also allow those that are most affected by these proposed changes to be engaged in the process and potentially even have some decision-making roles or very much not just be a passive role. So, how is it that we can do that? So, that's one thing that we're looking at with respect to our public engagement piece. How do we really lead with that equity lens? Really also, look at those communities who aren't historic, haven't historically been involved, and really engage those communities. So, another piece that we'll be applying throughout the work program is making sure that what we're doing is not just looking at these strategies, but updating our comprehensive plan chapter, Housing, and using that Housing Needs Analysis as the foundation for the goals that, the vision and goals as we move forward. So, you'll be seeing that come back, and a lot of that work that we'll use for updating the comprehensive plan chapter will be from that Housing Needs Analysis. Martha touched on this, is that we also think we've used leveraging existing projects. So, some of the reason why the projects related to implementing and looking at the densities within the commercial zoning districts kind of came into the first phase has to do with the timing of those projects. So, we wanted to leverage other projects that were going on. But I think another thing is the recognition that we are saying, you know, all of this can't be done in eighteen months, so we're letting folks know, really, we have to understand that the timeline is pushed out a little bit. So, that's kind of an overview of our work program approach. And then...
Oh, sorry.
That's right. So, that gets to why we're here tonight. So, again, another thing, I don't know if I described very well right at the beginning, but tonight, we are getting input from you on this Housing Issues Paper, and what we'll do with that is we have a meeting with the Board of County Commissioners in two weeks. I believe that it is February...
February eleventh.
February eleventh, it's pretty close to two weeks. Where, again, we'll be providing this information and the information in the Housing Issues Paper, and to be able to get direction for the work program, how we handle all of this. So, tonight, we were hoping that we would get input from you on, does this make sense? Does the staff recommendation, and that's pretty much which strategies to handle in which phase, makes sense? And is that appropriate? Do you have any input? Should something be addressed sooner or later, or especially those that we're saying perhaps these shouldn't be included at all? Wanted to talk a little bit about what methods of engagement should be used during the course of the project. And what I mean by that is we are looking to shape what this engagement looks like and maybe not use the typical advisory committee. So, a large project like this, we would often use an advisory committee and then come to you. But we're thinking about kind of shaping more like work groups that can address and be more nimble to the different phases, because some of the phases will have, will be focusing on certain topics where the other phases are focusing on other topics. Or perhaps there might be things that you want to provide input into us that you think will be helpful or have been found in the past helpful in regards to collecting a public engagement and then presenting that to you. You could also maybe, if you had comments on how you would like to be engaged throughout this process and different aspects. So, the final question that we'd like to hear from you about is are there other items that should be considered while this project is underway? And what we mean by that is, as we thought about that work plan, are there other things we should be considering and thinking about? Anything else that may have crossed your mind? So, those are the three things that we're hoping to touch on and get your feedback on.
I had a question. R-one and R-two are required. Why are they in the second phase and not the first?
Excellent question. And it's specifically because the work that's being done on the model code. And so, and Martha, maybe you want to touch a little bit, because you're sitting on the Model Code Committee or the work group.
The RACTAC. It's the Rules Advisory Committee, Technical Advisory Committee, to the Rules Advisory Committee. So, a large part of that is, well, there's two reasons. One is that we do have some time under state law in which to address this, so it's not imperative that we do it first. And two is that the state is going through this rulemaking to clarify some of the phrases, terms, requirements that are in the legislation, so we can understand how to apply it. And there will also be, out of that work group, a model code that we can use as a starting place. And so, that's not going to be, they're not expecting to have that adopted until fall late, or late 2020. And so, it... It would, we feel like that we need the additional direction, and it would be beneficial to have a model code to start from and then tailor it to meet our needs.
So, before we all dive in with questions, I just, I know this is the, basically, the first working paper, and I want to say, I don't know who wrote it or how many of you wrote it, but it was a very good job, thank you. It was well-presented, and you've organized it in a way that I feel like we can tackle it. And then, on the topic of tackling it, I feel like there's kind of a couple different questions for us to talk about tonight. There's, one, just the phasing, and then, two, what's in each phase and each of those options. So, I'm sure we all have comments on each one of those options, or several of them at least. And then, the question about, are there other items to talk about that aren't on here? And then, engagement. So, I don't know if we have preferences on how we want to tackle our discussion.
I have a question. On your second page of your handout here that she gave me, it's addressing the, there is a deficit in buildable residential land, and this is for going out to 2039. How do each of these phases address that chart? What will each one of those phases do to reduce that deficit?
That was my exact question, and the word I came up with was impact. It would have been so, because you started out with numbers, and that caught me, but I couldn't, on each of these options, I kept thinking, well, how does that help this? How does it, and not just in 39, but it would be nice to have it in chunks, how each of the phases would, because I think that would be one way to also choose the priorities. And so, impact at certain phases for each one, which I'm sure is a crazy request.
Well, I wouldn't say crazy. It's difficult, though, because until we know what the actual proposed regulations look like, we wouldn't know, we wouldn't be able to assign, do any modeling and assign any sort of number of new units. We try to address it generally in the column on this sheet that says, I've got my glasses, increases places for new housing units, and that really is directly tied to addressing the deficit. At this point, we can't be any more specific than we think it could create a large number of new units to address this versus it's really not going to create any new units, but it's valuable for other reasons. And so, that is the best way that we have to address it right now, because until we know, for example, what the increase in density would be, then in terms of number of units, and make some assumptions for development in commercial areas, we wouldn't know how many additional units it would yield.
I guess I would, I would think that part of the analysis, as you're developing the codes, would be to look at those trade-offs. If we go this way, we can get this many versus that way. So, to me, it's probably premature to have any expectations of what these specific strategies are going to provide, but certainly, once the strategies are, have been vetted and rolled out, clearly then, there'll be an opportunity to say, well, we think this strategy provides an opportunity for this many of these units and this many of that units. And that's how I, that's kind of how I envisioned it would play out, in my mind, anyway. Since I've got the mic, I guess I'd also like to offer, I have no, I think your order in phasing is, seems appropriate to me. I don't see any need to change it, given the, it's still, in my mind, it's still a fairly aggressive timeframe, which you're trying to tackle. And so, you know, you're not saying, this is going to take three years to do. You're saying, maybe it's going to take two. So, it seems like a reasonable approach to me, and your priorities make sense to me. So, that's my two cents on question number one.
And by priorities, you mean the phasing?
Huh?
By priorities, you mean the Phase One, Two, Three?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. While we're on that, can we just get a sound through of the recommended order in phasing? Murph, you want to dive in first?
Well, I'm serious, you know, seriously looking at what's getting people that aren't housed right now off the street, and we have emphasis on trying to do that through Zero Three, through the Phase One. I see that does get things moving, but we still have people that are, tonight, sleeping in the rain. Is there any other thing we can do here in our choices that would get people off the streets first? So, House First, which is actually a federal program, what I, or they're trying to push right now, House First, get people off the street, and then start changing our zoning. So, is there something here that we can shuffle?
So, I'm going to take a stab at this, and Karen, looks like she wants to say something too. I think that's part of, that's really part of the reason that we're not recommending we move Oh One forward through the zoning code, because currently, the board has the ability to use the emergency declaration to allow for immediate relief for some folks in certain sites. A lot of, as we... A lot of, as we, as we look through this and we looked at different populations that various actions served, it became really apparent that a lot of really the immediate relief is through programs through the H3S. Because what we're looking at really is affecting the built environment and that takes time. And so for those more immediate needs, we have programs and we have the emergency declaration and we have in phase one, identifying hopefully in a fairly quick timeframe, more areas possibly for a little bit more permanent transitional shelter kind of housing.
Martha said what I was going to say.
Okay.
Probably in different words.
So for what is in our purview, does the phasing.
Yes, it does. It makes sense to me.
Louise?
Um, is option eight down in the third phasing? Because we just don't know what all it is. Because really, to me, it ties in with, you know, the, let's see, the option. The option five, you know, again, so to me, I see them as closer related. So I just wondered, is option eight just down there because we don't know how to define it?
Um, that is, that's part of it. And I think through option five and also through looking at this middle housing, we may end up addressing some of those housing types. I don't, I don't think that they, it will be ignored. I think if we're talking about increasing densities and we're looking at sizes of units, we may start talking about the micro unit. It's just that it's not clearly defined. And after other changes are made, we, I think we can look at defining these and see if they are allowed, where, how, and if any other changes need to be made. But there's a lot of changes that will be made of, to create more allowances for more housing types and more, and smaller units.
I also had a question on appendix A. Since, I'm assuming we're using that to define the, you know, what is affordable housing? I noticed on the single, individual annual income, it's a little postscript of one, which is from a federal source. Is this nationwide or is this specific to our county?
Federal source, for Clackamas County.
Okay, because it just seems high. Adults on disability insurance, SSI, SSDI, they commonly make about $750 a month total to 1,100 tops. That is far less than $18,000 a year. So it seems like our chart starts high, really high for folks who, you know, for them, $600 a month is their entire income, not affordable. So I just wondered why our chart started so high.
So the example person came from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that provides an average of annual. Sorry.
We can't hear you.
Okay. The, the example person came from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that provides an annual average income, or wage for that type of job. And the, the household income, the median household income came from HUD, the Housing and Urban Development for Clackamas County. And HUD does that for every county across the nation.
Yeah, it just really high, because if even you look it up on the internet, you know, SSDI and SSI pay between $750 and 1,100 a month, period. So no way near $18,000. And 600 is totally unaffordable for them. Um, as to your phasing, yeah, I think, other than my question, I think, yeah, we're, we're good.
I'll go last, Mike.
I'm good with the way they've got it laid out.
I support it. I'm looking at all the weights and I think it looks right. Well done.
I agree. I think it's a good layout. I echo Louise's question on O eight. I think as you're in phase two, there's probably going to be some opportunities to look at some of those different housing types, particularly live work and those micro units. You're already going to be looking at clusters, cluster housing. So micro units might be somewhat related. It might come in different actual forms though. So there's probably some opportunities for a little bit of overlap to keep in mind as you're in phase two. But it looks like on your overall timeline, it's the end of phase two. Before you actually go to adoption, you'll be starting to look at phase three anyways. So that overlap should work well.
I have a, I just wanted to find out, any of these strategies that you're proposing here is going to have an impact on the taxpayer? Developing some of these projects and housing alternatives may increase some of this middle portion you have here of housing programs that require taxpayer funding for some of those vouchers, et cetera? Are we going to increase the taxpayer's contribution to this?
Okay. So that's not the intent. Again, we're looking at ways to affect changes to the built environment. I don't think that anyone is expecting any taxpayer money to be funding any of this development. I cannot speak to programs and how they're funded. I don't know, those are run through H3S department. But, so I, I don't really know how that would tie in. But we're certainly not looking to increase taxpayer expenditures for development.
I, I would add that through this project, the intent or we don't anticipate saying this is, supporting affordable housing is an important, is an important program. Therefore, we need to raise money to invest in affordable housing. What we're doing in this program, project is saying, where are areas that we can provide the opportunity to increase the number of housing units that a person may be able to develop? So I, it, it's that fine line between kind of built environment and programs. But we're not focusing on the program side, we're focusing on the built environment side.
But do we think we will get those developers to build those units? Because if, it seems like if it was affordable for them now, they would have done it. I mean, they'll say construction costs are such that when they're done, they can't rent it out at a couple of hun, you know, as $1,000 a month. That's why they rent it out at 1,500 or 2,000 a month.
So I guess I provided you with the example, you know, where we are working with, the Park Avenue project is underway. And so we're starting to look at the area around the light rail station and understanding what kind of densities might be appropriate near that light rail station. Basically getting more housing in that commercial area. And I think it was even today, we were talking with an affordable housing developer that was saying, at the density it is now, I, I couldn't develop. But if it was higher density and able, and they could take advantage of some of the other programs that support of building affordable housing, they could make it work, if, if that makes sense. So, so again, I, I do think by looking at that changing and what may be an appropriate density within those commercial areas supports the work that affordable housing developers are doing.
I come from a area of New Orleans where we had public housing that was a disaster. And I certainly don't want that to happen here.
I don't think that's the intent of this exercise. That's more of an issue with the commissioners. We're just going to change, change the zoning that allows developer more options than they currently have. How they go about doing it and how the county approves it, that's not our purview. So if you have a concern about that, I'd take that up with the commissioners.
I think, Karen, you hit on a good point that really puts an emphasis on number eight, zero eight, on the exploring the opportunities for permitting additional housing types and mixed use developments. Now, what your developer was talking about, if he could increase densities, does that mean in just one location? Or could he have a mixed development area that would work for him?
So if you look at O five, that one was getting at densities in phase one.
In phase one, yeah, but also on phase three at the zero eight.
And R two in phase two.
Yes.
Was some of the diversity. So I think the O eight was whatever didn't fit in that, whatever's left, let's figure that out.
Well, and I think Mary had a good point earlier that there is some overlap with the items in O eight. If we're increasing densities, we may be looking at smaller units, which in O eight would be called micro units. And so it's, it certainly will be considered. Just if somebody, if we're looking at one of these other strategies and it becomes apparent that we need to look at something called micro units and define it, it's not like we're going to say, oh, no, we can't do that because it's on O eight. You know, we're not going to do that until the future. If it, if it ties in, then we'll certainly acknowledge the overlap and take care of it.
So do we want to walk through the strategies and just see if there's any comments or questions left on each of them? I know I have a few comments, so I'm just going to call them out and see if we have any questions. So on the two recommended ones, are there any questions or comments?
Well, I wanted to mention that on R two, if you're going to have the duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, in the now restricted single family zones, that could cause, you know, some issue. In other words, when right now it's all single family and then as they become available, I guess lots or houses are torn down and they're built into duplexes and triplexes, then people in the single family homes may say, well, now they're devaluing our neighborhood. We're going to put our houses up for sale, we're out of here. In other words, there's going to be some impact to those people thinking that it's going to change their neighborhood. And so you, that's maybe tying into the methods of engagement and who we should ask. But that one, I could see some issues with that.
I would say methods of engagement is probably pretty important for that component. Because I think there are going to be a lot of fears of the impacts of this when in reality, it's going to be a slow change in most places. So I think a lot of education on what it will mean and what it could mean is probably important for the engagement for that phase.
Yes, I, I, I agree with you and we certainly will. The, the intent is, is to do the public engagement in a way that's appropriate for each strategy. And, and there will be some pushback despite the fact that it is a required, certain things are required under state law. It doesn't mean that we're not going to reach out to the community to try to educate and understand what standards, that we have the discretion to create, might be appropriate.
Optional strategy one, any comments or questions? I just have one question. I'm fine with where it ended up. But is there anything in the comp plan that encourages or discourages or doesn't support or does support these shelter off the streets strategies? Because if there's something that would get in the way of it, that would be worth looking at, but.
I'm going to say I don't think so, but I'm not 100%. Our comprehensive plan was, the housing portion of it was written in 1980-ish and has had very few updates and no sort of wholesale updates. And so if there is, we certainly would take a look at that through this project and make sure we're not creating conflicts, but.
It would probably get identified through the other projects that actually look at it. Okay. Optional strategy two, questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Optional strategy three, the transitional shelter communities, questions, comments? I'd just like to say, yes, please. I'm glad this is in phase one. When we were initially considering the temporary ones for the vets village, I know I pushed for it to be more extensive and more inclusive than what was actually adopted. So I'm happy to see it on the list, so thank you. Optional strategy four, the density bonus for including affordable housing.
Other than potentially looking at a required environment versus a bonus during sending.
Okay. And then my question about height and what comes with it. Optional strategy O four B for the transfer of development rights. I already commented on that one, so I won't repeat it. Optional strategy five, maximum densities in commercial zone districts. My question is, can we look at maximum densities in other zone districts as well? Are we limited?
Um, so it was specifically requested for commercial zoning districts. I, I'll need to think about that. The, the way our commercial zoning districts work right now is that if you're building standalone multifamily developments, then it kicks you into the development standards in our high density residential zone, which has the 25 dwelling unit maximum. So there wasn't a specific request for, to look at the high density residential as well. I, maybe?
I think since we have that capacity gap for high density residential, it's worth looking at.
I mean, quite frankly, there's not a lot of high density residential land. And so I guess you could argue that the impact wouldn't be that great and we could include it. But, yeah, we could certainly consider that, I'll write that down.
Or even in some of the moderate densities.
When you're talking about this commercial area, you're talking about like the strip malls and things like that, not, not industrial.
Right.
Right?
Yes. It's, for the most part, it's going to be quarter commercial or general commercial zones, which are found mostly along our major corridors, 82nd and McLaughlin. Those kinds of areas, not, certainly not industrial zones.
There's a lot of empty space there on McLaughlin. A lot of those businesses are closed down now.
All right. Optional strategy O six for parking standards.
No. Absolutely needs to be done.
Agreed.
Don't do it poorly.
I'd say you can consider, in addition to the hierarchy of the minimum requirements, in Gresham, we have an option where you can actually get a parking study that shows what your actual parking demand will be and get up to a 50% reduction from your required minimums. So it might be worth looking at if you could do that, especially when you have a more unique use that doesn't quite fit what the, the code is structured for. All right.
Thank you.
Optional strategy O seven for zoning to preserve manufactured dwellings. Comments, questions? Okay. Number O eight, I think we've talked about along the way for the remaining different housing types. Are there any remaining questions? O nine, clarify comprehensive plan policies for rezoning in low density residential districts. I think this is another one where there might be some overlap when you're looking at the policies for House Bill 2001, et cetera. There'll probably be some overlap earlier on, so.
Well, that's largely why we put it in phase two with the other two required projects, because there's a lot of overlap with all three of them.
Optional strategy 10, restrict temporary dwellings for care. Comments?
No.
Okay. Then let's move on to staff's questions for us. Are there any items that should be considered that weren't on the list of options? And remember, we're looking at the ZDO and comp plan, not the HHS. It's not quite the ZDO, but some of the things that might be worth considering in the planning department are different incentives or encouragements, like looking at SDC fees and review times, pre-development assistance, just how much you can help. I know that's a staff time burden though. And then maybe just what other incentives there could be within the ZDO. That's all I had. I didn't really have anymore.
Incentives for.
Well, I.
Putting you on the spot.
I mean, we were looking at density and then what would go with it, like height, et cetera. But if there's other limitations that you hear in the feedback from developers, I can't do it, but I could do it at more density, or I can't do it, but I could do it at lower parking. Or if, you know, there were a shorter review time or X, Y, and Z. So there might be other incentives that come up out of what you hear from the outreach.
Okay.
Can I just add, I was supposed to speak closer to the mic. So we have just recently gone through and are entering into an approval process. So we have just recently gone through and are entering into an approval process for revised SDC fees that actually support a, a lower fee for smaller units and a lower fee for accessory dwelling units. And so we are trying to make some near-term changes, such as what you're talking about, to kind of address the housing issue from all different angles.
And that also might be one that could go with affordable housing. So the affordable units could get the SDC reduction or something like that. Did anybody have, else have any other, other others? Okay, what about engagement?
Wow. That's going to be a project. I think my biggest encouragement would be to tailor it by area. I know that, you know, when we've had outreach in our area, when it was really focused on a rule versus kind of the whole big program, it hit the mark a lot better. Also having numbers, more numbers on, if we did this, we believe it'll result in this, or.
And how do you reach out to the people who are now homeless to see if they will be assisted by this? That maybe they supposedly have enough income that they could rent a place if it was lower price. You know, how do we reach out to them? I mean, you can reach out to people who are already in a dwelling. How do you reach out to the others?
And I know you'd said probably not the traditional advisory committee, and I would definitely wholeheartedly agree. You just kind of get the same characters when you do advisory committees and you don't necessarily get a good representation of the population. So going to each neighborhood, maybe doing specific work groups that can target different demographics, trying to find some way to get the homeless and low, or houseless and low-income groups to know, okay, how can the ZDO affect you? You know, try to target specific work groups with specific questions to the appropriate populations. And then what we were just mentioning with, you had mentioned that in talking to developers, they had said, you know, we can make a pencil with more density. So if you have a developer-focused group, then you can kind of target it on where you can encourage what with them. Any other outreach?
Social groups and foundations that are working on this right now would gladly, but, give input on this. On which direction? I just attended a congressional townhouse, or a townhouse, town hall this weekend that was put on by two congressmen at Jefferson High School. And some of it's related, some of it's a step above. Of course, it's at federal level and it's pushing for initiatives. But the, some of the people that attended definitely had something to say on how they want to reach local government, so. I did invite who I could run into to come and testify if possible, but we didn't get a response.
I think that the final piece of advice on it would be this is a lot to absorb and it's a huge picture and there's a lot of moving parts. And I think especially when you're doing community outreach, just boiling it down to what's sincerely meaningful. Not that you can't have conversations if people want to talk about whatever, manufactured home park or whatever, but making it as tailored and meaningful to the communities will be a big deal.
Did we answer your questions?
I think that's marvelous.
I give a, on a separate note, this, this has a budget implications. So, and, and thinking about our previous conversations about notifications for property changes and the outreach associated with that, I'm assuming you're going to have some kind of limit in terms of how much outreach you can do that fits within the budget. I think it would, might be useful for folks to understand that as well. Because, so that when you come back and you say, this is all the outreach, and someone says, well, gee, that wasn't enough, that there's some context behind what you can do, what, you know, what. You know, so it's kind of like you're making an assessment of your staff's ability to do the work. Well, there's other implications as well that I think we, we need to understand as well. Because it's easy for us to say, include everybody. Well, how do you go about doing that? Do you go door to door? I mean, what's, you know, what's reasonable and what's enough to get the input you need? So I think that would be helpful to understand as well.
And I think there's got to be a balance between every neighborhood association, every CPO and every, every, every versus the auto-registration of, for this vast area, we're going to have three meetings, so try to attend them. That, that was not good enough. So there's got to be a balance and I know, and I agree, Tom, there's a budget. And there's no way, you will not get the comment, but I didn't know about it. It's going to happen.
Yeah. But it kind of, it kind of goes back to when I was working on the Perks campaign. We had a political consultant kind of tell us about, you know, polling and all that stuff. And, you know, the thing that always resonated with me is you don't have to eat the whole bowl of soup to know how it tastes. And that was kind of his analogy for public outreach. You can get, there's a certain, you've got statistical analysis that work in your favor to say, okay, yeah, we maybe not, didn't reach out to everyone, but do we think we got enough of representation so that we could taste the soup, so to speak? And, and so it's another way of looking at it.
Online surveys. Online surveys.
Well.
It doesn't get everyone, but it, you know, when it's spread across the whole county, it's, if you can't make it.
It seemed to be pretty biased with a certain group. So I, I, yes, they're convenient, but they're not random. There are people who are interested and want to take the time. And so you got to figure out a way to get people who may not be interested or care about doing a random survey to kind of get their, their feedback as well.
Because remember, we're trying to get at people with very limited resources as well. And they don't respond to online surveys. They probably don't even have any way of finding them.
Anyway.
As far as outreach to us, I assume the standard study sessions and et cetera.
Well, I guess that would be the plan unless we hear something different from you all, but.
Study sessions.
We would certainly do another, with each phase, we would do a work session or work sessions. And then there would be hearings, process. So, thank you for saying that, Tom. There is a budget, but I think one of the things, one of the nice things about being able to leverage some of the grant funds that we have is that the grant funds are from Metro. Metro has an understanding and an interest in spending money to get some quality equitable outreach and reach out to communities that historically haven't been reached. And so there is budget in those grants specifically to do that, probably at a higher level than we would be able to do without that money. And so we intend to leverage that to the best of our ability to make some connections and certainly be able to reach out to the same folks in the future and to maybe learn some new methods and, and things like that. So it, it's, it's definitely another reason to leverage those funds, but it's, it is expensive. And there, there is generally a recognition of it around the region. And there is some rebudgeting going on in, in certain arenas to really, to really be able to do this better than we've done in the past.
So with that, shall we move on to the rest of our agenda?
I, I think we're there.
Okay. Was there any other business?
No, Darcy stole my thunder. I'm just going to remind you again on recording that the Planning Commission recruitment is open and for the three open positions, Michael, Mary, and Tom. And applications are due March 15th.
Okay. Minutes, has everybody had a chance to look over?
No, because we just got these tonight, didn't we? I have not had a chance to look at this. Is there any way we could do it at the next, unless everybody else just wants to do it?
I just wanted to mention, I'm completely absent from the minutes and I was present at this meeting. So I wondered what happened there.
So you want to.
Were you not paying attention, Louise?
Yes, right. Commissioner was present. I was present. Later on, I, I scrolled through them briefly and later on it does talk about my vote, my nay vote. And I thought, okay, well, I am acknowledged that I was there and voting, but I wasn't listed as present or absent.
Do I need her?
Oh, no, there it is. I am up there.
You're there, right.
You will most certainly be added.
Has anybody else not had a chance to look at these over?
I, I briefly went through them during the meeting, but I, I can wait.
You want to take a few minutes, that's okay, or we can, you can digest them and put it off to next meeting.
Why don't we just take two minutes?
That'd be great.
And I'll read them over.
Yep.
I'll give, I'll give us two minutes and then I'll. Okay. All right, while everybody's finishing, I found one comment that I'll just start us off with. On page three, that second paragraph, first sent, second sentence, there's an extra period. That's my only comment. Anybody else?
Wasn't it dot, dot?
Yeah, page three, second paragraph, end of the second line, second sentence, there's two periods.
Oh, I thought it was just, well, and there was more said, but we don't want to write it down.
Yeah, dot, 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 and other things.
After the word mitigated?
Right there. On page three. All right, any other comments on the minutes?
No, they looked really good.
Except for me being missing.
Except for Louise, yes.
Louise in the period.
You so want credit for a gravel pit.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with corrections as noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, that's minutes. Schedule review?
Okay. So the Planning Commission schedule's on the back of the agenda. And the next meeting, February 10th, has been canceled. February 24th, we haven't canceled yet, but we don't have any topics for. I will let Jennifer make that decision if she's got something she needs to bring forward. On March 9th, you have two public hearings. The first one, and I'm not sure which order they'll go in. I, I think the first one is actually the second one listed here, Z 0004 dash 20. It is a comprehensive plan amendment for a small amendment to Sandy's Urban Growth Foundry. And Glenn Hamburg will bring that forth to you. The other one is a proposed zone change in the rural residential area of the county. And Melissa Aaron's, another senior planner, will bring that forward to you. March 23rd, we have set aside for a public hearing related to any zoning code amendments that need to be made for the short-term rental project. That is contingent upon the board actually adopting the proposed amendments that are going into the county code. And I can tell you the schedule of those hearings in just a minute. April 13th, you'll be seeing Glenn Hamburg again for the minor and time-sensitive comp plan and ZDO amendments, ZDO 276. And that's all we have on here that I'm aware of.
The rest of the year is wide open.
Rest of the year is wide, we have a lot of things percolating. Don't worry. And then for the Board of County Commissioners, we will be taking this, a similar discussion to the Board in a policy session on February 11th. Short-term rentals will be going before the Board for a first and second reading of proposed amendments to the county code, which would create a short-term rental registration program and regulations. We did talk to you about this, oh, gosh, probably six-ish months ago. That is, the very first public hearing is an evening business meeting on January 30th for the first reading of the ordinance. And the second reading is on February 13th, or the 14th, but it's Thursday, February 13th. If that moves forward, then we will also move, we will move forward with the required zoning code amendments. And then the mining application that you heard on December 16th is going to the Board on February 5th. That's all I got.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
I got something. I had a request from some of the folks in my area. They wanted to know who was on the Planning Commission. And I looked on the website and we're not listed on there by name. They were curious as to who's on the Planning Commission and what area they're from. Not necessarily contact information, but where are you from? Like, I'm from Milwaukee, and they would like to know that so they can see what the diversity is on the commission.
I thought that was listed on the website. I was just looking at it for our applications. I think that is on.
I thought it was too. I don't know if you'll, I can look really quick.
Just locational?
Just, just the location, so they know if their area is being represented.
It's not letting me open it. I'll look into it. I, I thought that that was on there, but I'll definitely look into it.
I feel like I saw it when I was looking for the applications, so, okay.
I tried. I tried to do it on the fly, didn't.
Then seeing nothing else, I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:41.